Good morning, I am Delegate Terry Austin, I represent the thirty-seventh House District. I'm based here in Bodatot County. I've served ten years in the House, in January I will begin my eleventh year of service. I'm joined today and we're going to co-share our responsibilities on this public hearing by my good friend, Senator Emmett Hanger. Senator Hanger will be retiring after this session. He served nine years in the House of Delegates and twenty-eight years in the Senate. I can tell you firsthand, I've worked with Senator Hanger as a budget conferee and on legislation, and there is no greater advocate for the people of Virginia than Senator Hanger. Mental health, public health, our state parks, many, many other aspects. Anything that was handed off to Senator Hanger, he fully devoted himself to providing the very best representation for the people of Commonwealth, not just his district. So Senator Hanger, you will be missed, my friend, let me let me state by saying that. I'm going to begin, this is one of the four virtual regional hearings on the state budget being held across the Commonwealth today by Senate Finance and Appropriations and the House Appropriations Committee. Each year the committees are required by law to hold a series of public hearings on the governor's proposed budget to give all of you, the citizens of the Commonwealth, the opportunity to comment on specific issues of concern to you. Today is your opportunity to talk. It is our job as legislators to listen to you. Let me take a moment before we begin to have other legislators with us introduce themselves. Staff will call out your name and then you may state your name and the district you represent. Ms. McKay, would you do that? Or who's preparing?
Yes, of course, I can I can do that, Delegate Austin, having difficulty finding my unmute button. We'll start off with the senators that we have on the line, I see, I thought I saw Senator Deeds, but it looks like he dropped off. And then we'll go to Delegate Morefield.
Good morning, Will Morefield here, representing the new forty-third district in southwest Virginia. I look forward to the presentation, thank you.
We will go to Delegate Marshall next. Delegate Marshall? I think he's connecting to the art audio, so how about Delegate Rasool?
Good morning, everyone, Delegate Rasool, representing the Roanoke area. I look forward to hearing your feedback on the budget.
Yes, and let's try Delegate Marshall one more time. Looks like he's having Delegate Marshall? I think he may have some difficulty with his audio, and so those are all the members that are on the line, other than the co-chairs yourself and Senator Hanger.
Thank you, Ms. McKay, and welcome to my colleagues, and thank you for joining today. Delegate Marshall is a long-serving member, new to the appropriations, but he brings a great deal of experience there with us. I'm going to start out with a few simple ground rules that will help our hearing today go smoothly, and at the same time, give everyone the opportunity to be heard in a reasonable amount of time. First, when you signed up to speak, you received an email with a Zoom link for the hearing. As of this morning, the House Appropriations and Senate Finance and Appropriations Committees' websites were updated to include a list of each speaker who signed up to speak, along with a number. That's the order in which you will speak. Staff will from time to time call out those numbers, along with the name from the sign-up list, to give you an idea of how far we are down the list. If you are not present at your time to speak for whatever reason, then you will be allowed to speak at the end if you are present in the Zoom meeting. As we get closer to your number, staff will move you from the waiting area into the actual meeting room so that you can speak. However, please do not speak until your name is called. Remember to unmute yourself as soon as your name is called, to minimize transition time. Senator Hanger, would you like to pick up there and conclude? Yeah, sure, I sure will, and certainly Delegate Austin, thank you for your candid remarks. And I'm joined, of course, I'm sitting here in downtown Mount Solon, I represent Augusta County currently, and a lot of the Shenandoah Valley area and counties to the east over north of Charlottesville in that area. So as Delegate Austin indicated, this my term will end as the new session begins, but I'm still very much interested in what happens and anxious to hear remarks from the citizens in western Virginia, or wherever you're calling in from. But if you're on the western Virginia link today, you're on the best one, so you picked a good choice to be with us in western Virginia today. We also have two senators joining us. Senator Edwards from Roanoke is joining us, and like myself, Senator Edwards, in fact, we came into the Senate at the same time, twenty-eight years ago, and he also is retiring from the Senate this year and has done an excellent job of representing the Roanoke Valley and all of Virginia with his work. Senator Deeds also is joining us, who has represented a lot of the valley over time and is with the new districts, is now residing in Charlottesville, representing a lot of central Virginia over there. So the three of us will be taking notes along with our staff as you make your remarks. And on your remarks, I would just say that please limit them to three minutes. You will hear a timer when you're nearing that end of three minutes. If you're with a group and you're all going to be saying the same thing, try to get someone, an individual, to speak for the group. If someone has already said what you were going to say, just kind of be very brief about your remarks and say you agree with that previous speaker, those types of things as courtesies, so that everyone will have an opportunity to have their input into our hearing today, and that we can have notes on what your feelings are, whether you like the budget, whether you dislike it, new things you would like to see added. It's always an interesting time as we begin the budgeting process, it's a long, drawn-out process. Hopefully it will not be as long and as drawn out as it was last year, that the new Senate and House of Delegates will be able to deliver a budget to the governor in a timely manner. So we look forward to that, and after next week, I will be an observer as well, I hope to have some input into the process. And as Delegate Austin indicated, our staff member will be calling you by number, and I think we're about ready to begin the process, unless I will, if Delegate, if Senator Edwards or Senator Deeds would like to introduce himself, he could do that right now. Would you like to do that, or are you ready just to begin? Senator Hanger, if they do not, I would like to say, what a pleasure it's been to serve with Senator Edwards here in the valley. Senator Edwards has been a very, very strong advocate for the valley, Roanoke area, for many, many years, and I really had the honor and the pleasure of sort of him mentoring me through the process. And he, like yourself, will be greatly missed in the Senate. Senator Deeds and I have served together here in Allegheny and part of Rockbridge County over many years, and Senator Deeds will continue. He also is a strong advocate for many, many issues within the Senate and the House, and we appreciate his participation today. Thank you, Senator. Okay, I think we're probably ready to begin, Kim.
Wonderful.
Viewer Tyler, who's letting people into the meeting?
Tyler's letting folks into the room, and I'm announcing them.
Thank you. Senator, I think we're ready to begin.
All right, first up, we have Amanda Adams, she is in the room with us.
Hello. My name is Amanda Adams, and I live in Roanoke County, Virginia, with my husband and our three children. I'd like to thank you all today for your time and your continued support of the Didi waiver program. We have my children on the priority one Didi waiver waitlist. Our kids qualify because of mine and my husband's income. By getting the priority one fully funded, it would be life-changing for our whole family. By fully funding the priority one Didi waiver, this would allow me and my husband to work to our fullest ability and provide for our family and not have to take pay cuts, turn down promotions, and even file bankruptcy. We won't have to continue to work reduced hours, tell our employers that we cannot take promotions or pay increases out of fear of our income increasing too much that our children will lose their Medicaid. We are tired of being pushed into poverty in order for our children to keep their Medicaid. The financial burden by Medicaid being linked to family income has already affected our financial means enough. We can both work to our fullest potential and know that our children are taken care of if the waiver is fully funded. Lastly, I would like to thank the Ark of Virginia's legislative agenda and all they do to help others live a life like yours. Thank you again, and my hope is that you fully support the funding of the priority one Didi waiver, thank you.
Thank you about it for your comments.
Yes.
Number two, we have Aya Ibrahim.
Hello, good morning, I'm Dr. Aya Ibrahim from Bodatot County. I'd like to start by thanking you for your continued support in funding Didi waivers. I'm a mother of three, and my youngest has advocating for my daughter and others like her. As a family with a child with a disability, our daughter Emily does not qualify for Medicaid or SSI due to our income. She's on the Didi priority two waitlist and has been denied the CCC plus waiver multiple times. Despite being significantly behind her peers and needing medical interventions and checkups because of her Down syndrome, she doesn't qualify for the Medicaid waiver because she's not in dire need. It is, we are now left in a mounting significant from regular monitoring, checkups, necessary therapies, and even a recent surgery. Many medical professionals are shocked to find that just because of her medical needs and disability alone, she does not qualify for Medicaid. Our system is reactive, and it's waiting for my daughter and others like her to fall significantly behind before providing meaningful support. Our hope is that developing core services program can be proactive in helping families like ours and continue the valuable work that programs like Early Intervention had started. Our mounting medical debt is due to our daughter not qualifying for Medicaid, and it's causing us to have to limit her therapies for financial reasons, and even consider moving out of state to find a state that does provide Medicaid for people with disabilities regardless of their family's income. I know that this is a complicated problem, but I urge you to be proactive in developing the Core Services Program that we can help children like mine and others. Please support development of Core Services, and for those who qualify for the Didi waiver, and we hope that this will provide opportunities for success and future opportunities for independence, which will cost our state less in the long run. While we do not yet receive the Didi waiver, we do know that it is a lifeline for money, and therefore it is crucial that we continue to support it until it's fully funded. I'd like to also end by saying that I support the Ark of Virginia's legislative agenda, and I commend them for disabilities. My daughter, my daughter's name is Emily, which means my hope in Arabic, and it is my hope that we can work together to help improve the lives of children and adults with disabilities. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Abraham.
Next up, number three, Bucky Boone. Mr. Boone, I believe you're on mute.
Good morning, my name is Bucky Boone, I'm from Medeville, Virginia, and I'm Chair of the Virginia Board of Social Services. I thank you for holding this regional hearing on Virginia's budget. It comes at an opportune time. For just last month, the Board of Social Services voted unanimously to encourage me as Chair and other members to contact their legislators to express the board's support for funding to replace VACMS, the Virginia Case Management System, with a new integrated data system. Unfortunately, this item is not in the governor's budget, so the workers and the clients of Virginia's Department of Social Services will depend on you and the General Assembly to add it to the budget. Here's what I'd like to tell you about this funding request. One of the least exciting and most important functions of the Department of Social Services is case management. Helping families that are eligible receive the services they need, maintaining confidential records, making sure that communications with families and among providers of services are maintained is crucial. The data system that is essential to, an essential tool for this work is VACMS. It is so out of date and so riddled with problems that it threatens the mission of the Department of Social Services to design and deliver high-quality human services that help Virginians achieve safety, independence, and overall well-being. This system is so cumbersome with near constant stoppages that it is harming staff morale. Staff members who have left the agency recently have credited it for their departure. It's also a money pit. The $10 million spent annually on upgrades and code changes could go toward paying for in-house staff in the planned replacement. In fact, that change is in the plan for the new system. Local agency staff report that it takes three to four times longer to process a case than it would with a more functional system, up to an hour instead of fifteen to thirty minutes. Estimated conservatively, this suggests that more than 250,000 wasted staff hours per year and associated delays in benefits to the people of Virginia. Constant system downtime results in duplicated work, delays in use of personal time and overtime. This problem is dragging down the efforts by the department, it is poised to make sure all Medicaid clients are enrolled, according to the post-COVID guidelines. The time limit today prevents me from going into the excruciating details of the problems of the system, but it is obvious that it needs to be replaced. I would like to point out that the department's leadership team has created a detailed strategy for developing and purchasing a new system. They just need the funding stream to begin the process. The other point I would like to make is that the development, purchase, and implementation of this new system is projected to take four years from when funding is first made available. This extended timeline is because of federal regulations and state purchasing requirements. It will still take that long if the funding becomes available two years from now. But the department and the people who depend upon its services need that new system as soon as possible. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Number four in our speaking queue is Catherine Childers. Catherine with us, number four. Tyler?
Yes, Kim, she's running.
Okay, number four, Catherine Childers.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I have been traveling, so I apologize. I did not prepare a speech, but you will be hearing what my reality is, and I want to tell you that I was elated to hear the governor put in the budget about funding all of the priority one budget slots, waiver slots. I have a daughter that has a rare syndrome, and she has many medical issues in addition to an intellectual disability. And even with all of that, we were urgent priority one, and it took nine years for us to get a waiver slot. And as someone who advocates for other folks who are not able to speak for themselves, I can tell you that this is just, it's inhumane. We, as a society, have got to take care of our folks who cannot care for themselves. I know that it's very expensive, and the system is flawed in many ways, and I know that there are so many pieces of legislation for all of you to review. It is mind-boggling when you delve into all of the acronyms and the rules and regulations that surround this issue, and I would welcome the chance to talk with you, your staffers, anyone in your offices to help you understand what it is like. In the official agencies such as DMAS, I don't think that they are purposefully trying to pass rules against families who have individuals with these significant disabilities. However, I do think that there is quite a bit of gray area in the interpretation of some rules and regulations, and we are causing significant problems for families in our state. You'll hear terms such as Appendix K rulings and LRI and many other acronyms, and I encourage you to please follow up so that you can understand what is happening. I am one of the lucky ones. I have a graduate degree, I have many years of experience, and I am also married to a professor. I am still able to work, even though I have a child with significant disabilities. But the only reason that I'm able to work is because I had a significant work history, and I was able to prove my value, and my type of employment is such that I don't have to be there face-to-face to interact with someone. It doesn't matter if you're a doctor, a secretary, an automotive mechanic. If you have a child with disabilities, you will not be able to hold a job. And that's the truth, because as someone who is in a managerial supervisory position and upheld those my entire life, I would have to fire someone who was constantly out for a sick child, or when the caregivers don't show up. We can't find caregivers because they're able to make more money at McDonald's or Target, where they're not wiping butts and being hit and spit, and all of these other things that are major responsibilities. We don't want to promote families to have to be on welfare. Let's continue to allow parents to be caregivers. This was an issue that was put forth before COVID. Now that COVID has passed, we've proven that that can work. It's been working in other states. DMAS was unable to get the rules from the states where it's working, but I'm telling you that it does, it does work, and it is in the best interest of the individuals and our taxpayers, because it costs much less, and the folks are better taken care of when they're cared for by someone who loves them versus someone who's being paid minimum wage or barely above, who doesn't care.
Miss Childers, can I ask you to wrap it up, please?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
Yes, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you, and I have much other information I'd be happy to share. And please contact me if I can be of further assistance. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kylie, for getting on the call.
Number five is Christine Caldweller. Number five, okay, she's on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Chris Caldweller, I'm on the board of the Ark of New River Valley, and I live in the New River Valley. We have many, many people in our area who are in desperate need of funding for waiver so that they can live safely in the community. It's a crisis, and it's a crisis that we've been talking about for years. This year, our governor has heard us, and he's included thirty, over 3,400 new waiver fundings in the budget. This is historic. It'll make a huge difference from some of your most vulnerable constituents. And I can be real short and to the point with this, we hope, we all hope, those of us who support, love, and advocate for people with disabilities, that that you will support his effort to fund 3,400 new slots. Please don't miss this opportunity to do the right thing for your citizens with disabilities. I appreciate all you've tried to do in the past, and please step up to do the whole thing this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Caldweller.
Number six in the speaking queue, Jama Schubert.
Hello.
Hello.
For giving me the time to speak. My name is Jama Schubert, and I am the Director of Developmental Services for Encircle. I oversee the southwest region of the state. Encircle is a nonprofit organization that provides a variety of human services around the state, and we have been helping people since 1888. I have worked in the field of developmental services for 23 years, and this work has truly become my passion. Currently, we help more than 300 Virginians with developmental disabilities live and thrive in air communities by providing a variety of Medicaid waiver services. We are pleased that the governor has included substantial funding for additional Medicaid waiver slots, and we are supportive of having more Virginians be able to access the care in air communities that they deserve. At Encircle, we are eager and ready to help more people with developmental disabilities, but we are struggling to hire direct support professionals at the current rates, given pressures of inflation, rising wages, and the tight labor market. Virginia's minimum wage is on track to increase by 12.5% in January of 2025, which is great for our staff, but it will make it even more difficult to recruit and retain people if our rates do not keep up. Since Virginia's providers are already having trouble staffing the waiver slots that exist, we are requesting that the General Assembly increase rates alongside the new slots. Air direct support professionals are vital to the work that we do. They provide immeasurable services to help meet the needs of individuals with developmental disabilities, such as providing supports for hygiene needs, feeding, oversight of medication, medical needs, transportation needs. They also teach life skills and safety, among many other things. Our staff also serve as mentors, friends, and lifelines. For many of the people we support, we are their family, as they have no one to care for them. We come alongside them and make a difference in their lives. So if we don't have a workforce, obviously, we can't provide services for folks who have a waiver slot. Thank you for the care that you have shown to Virginians with developmental disabilities over the years. Please help us to serve more people. Thank you. Please help us to serve more people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hubert.
Number seven, Janet Settle.
Good morning and Happy New Year. I'm Janet Settle from Abingdon, Virginia. I'm a consultant for the Southwest Regional Recreation Authority doing business at Spearhead Trails and also the Heart of Appalachia Tourism Authority. Both are located in the seven coalfield counties of Lee Scott Wise, Dickinson Russell, Buchanan, Tassau and the city of Norton. Although we're doing business at Spearhead Trails and off-highway trail systems, we're really in the economic development business. Since twenty thirteen, millions of dollars of private monies have been invested in the infrastructures to support the trail systems. Spearhead requested a one-time allocation of eight hundred thousand dollars, which is included in the governor's budget. This money will be used to provide a new roof for our building and to replace out, to replace the aged-out fleet of equipment. In addition, we requested additional operating funds. The authority is responsible for four hundred miles of multi-use trail system. Employment with Spearhead is the same as any other state employer and offers VRS benefits. Currently, Spearhead has six employees for trail maintenance, four trail rangers, six office employees and three employees who are responsible for a hundred acre sportsman's complex, which includes archery and firearms activities. The current payroll to include benefits for the nineteen positions is approximately one point two million. We're in the prior budget for one point one. To fulfill the legislative mandated duties and responsibilities of the authority, there's an immediate need to recruit and hire additional personnel. Also, the authority has not received any state, additional state appropriation to pay for the pay raises. Delegate Morphil and Senator Pillion and others will be patroning in a budget amendment for Spearhead. Our closest competition is Hatfield McCoy in West Virginia, which is funded at twelve million dollars annually and they return sixty-eight million. The economic impact for Spearhead at one point one is over eighteen million. We're a profit center for the Commonwealth. Heart of Appalachia is an essential component to Spearhead's success. They not only provide marketing support for Spearhead, but for the entire coalfield outdoor tourism community. For twenty-five years, they received civil penalties from coal mining funds, coal mining fines, but with the demise of the coal business, these funds have dried up. They have a staff of three. In twenty twenty-three, they distributed over a hundred and forty-five thousand brochures and magazines, an increase of sixty-three thousand from twenty twenty-two. Website traffic was up two hundred and fifty-three percent. And our localities have reported a forty percent increase in rentals over the last year. Heart of Appalachia is the base, in the base budget for three hundred thousand, but did not receive the requested increase of a hundred and fifty thousand. Leader Quinn will be sponsoring a budget amendment. I wanted to take just a minute. Senator Hanger's been a real advocate for Spearhead Trails. He and Ms. Hanger visited on a retreat in twenty eighteen and I'm gonna miss you, sir, but I wish you well. We've had numerous legislators that have come down to southwest Virginia and we're thrilled to enjoy bipartisan support. As always, I'm deeply appreciative of the, all the challenging work that you do on behalf of the common, Commonwealth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Settle. We look forward to seeing you.
I'll see you in Richmond.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Chair, number eight is Jessica Price.
Ms. Price, if you could promote yourself to panelists when it appears on your screen. And it appears they're having issues getting out of the waiting room. So if we could go to Jim Best and then come back to Jessica.
Yes, number nine is Jim Best.
Well, good morning. I'm Jim Best from Floyd County. Although I belong to several groups, I'm speaking this morning for myself. I ask that our proposed biennial budget strike funding for the Virginia Israel Advisory Board. Now, how my heart and research brought me to this ask. When the leader of a small foreign state observes that America is a thing you can move very easily and the current military strategy named Option C requires the harnessing of America, my rights as a Virginia taxpayer are being usurped. I reject being harnessed or moved easily by a foreign influence. When a country boasts that we have promoted laws in most U.S. states which determine that strong action is to be taken against whoever tries to boycott. And in twenty sixteen, VIAB proposed to keep a blacklist of companies and people in Virginia who supported BDS. My First Amendment rights were being threatened. When a delegate staff in the Pocahontas Building answered my question, "How do you feel about VIAB?" They responded with smiles. We love VIAB because they give us bingo money. When the VIAB FOIA uncovered a pattern of self-dealing corruption and foreign influence, I'm cheated as an American and a Virginia taxpayer. When Virginia Secretary of Commerce reviewed VIAB records and stated, "The annual report is likely the most inflated with out merit that I have seen in my decade here." I questioned VIAB transparency and claimed return on investment. When VIAB established a multi-billion dollar foreign company exempt from FDI standards guiding other foreign investments, proposes utilities requiring the clearing of thousands of rural acres in Virginia, is immune from compliance with VEDP standards, VIAB is taking advantage of domestic investors and Virginia consumers. When that company profits from resources and utilities installed in stolen territory, is a documented violator of human rights and is not responsible for the welfare of any Virginia constituents, as are all other advisory boards, Virginia taxpayers are being harmed for the benefit of a foreign business. VIAB does not conform to the purpose of any other advisory board, but is nevertheless funded by Virginia taxpayers and helps Israeli companies build U.S. operations in Virginia, as their website states. Indeed, Virginia government has been easily moved. The Virginia budget must first serve.
Would you, would you wrap it up if you could, very pleased? Thank you. Yes, sir.
The Virginia budget must first serve local business, must deserve public trust, secure constitutional rights and thwart attempts to harness or easily move us for foreign benefit. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Best. Appreciate you joining us.
Number ten in the queue is Joy Spencer.
Hello, good morning. Let me start by saying thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. My name is Joy Spencer and I'm the CEO of the largest consumer-directed services provider in the state, Moms in Motion. We serve over twelve thousand families across the Commonwealth, including in the western part of the state, and we employ over a hundred and sixty people. We've been in business since two thousand nine. So I wanted to take a minute this morning and just express my excitement about the waiver slots that are being awarded under the new budget for eliminating the priority one waiting list. Unfortunately, if we don't also address provider capacity, simply awarding those slots is not going to solve the problem we have with people accessing services. You have to have the providers available in order for those services to be provided. So I'm here today to specifically talk about consumer-directed provider capacity. Our services have been in existence since two thousand five. It gives the people the ability to choose how and whom their services are provided, provided by. As of the end of twenty twenty-three, I'm here to tell you this service line, consumer-directed services, is no longer sustainable. We were part of a rate study done with all DD providers several times now. And in both occasions that those were presented to the General Assembly, our rate increase has been passed up. So when all other DD providers were given rate increases two years ago, we were left at the temporary twelve and a half percent rate that were awarded to all providers. I was able to work very hard last session and get the House and the Senate to agree to our rate reimbursement increase. And in the midst of the negotiations for those rates, sorry, for the budget, our rates, our amendments were stripped out. So we were left behind again. So we are currently functioning at two thousand five rate with a twelve and a half percent increase one time. That's the only rate increase we've ever gotten. We're competing with the likes of Walmart workers and fast food workers, but we're required to have an education, a degree. So I'm here today to ask that you consider the recommended Burns and Associates rate increase that was recommended on the last two studies, in the last two sessions for consumer-directed services. I'm also here to ask that you remove the requirement for our team to have degrees in order to do this job, just as the state employees' degrees were removed this past year. And thirdly, I'm here to ask that we be allowed to do one of our five billable codes, our routine visits, which are visits in between our in-person visits as a virtual visit. All three of these apps, rate increase, removal of the degree requirement and being able to do part of our work as a telehealth method, would increase provider capacity on the consumer-directed services and would allow for this service to be sustainable for the more than forty thousand people that choose it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer.
Number eleven, Keisha James. I don't see Keisha in the room, so is number twelve Maggie Mowen.
And she's in the room, but she, we are having difficulty promoting her to panelist. So if we could skip to Mark.
Yeah, number thirteen, Margot Utterback.
Yes, hi, thank you. My name is Margaret Utterback. I live in Rockingham County. First, I want to say thank you to Senator Hanger. He has done a lot for what, the cause that I'm trying to promote here. Thank you for taking the time to hear our concerns. I speak for my son and those who don't have a voice. So many people have already brought up all the issues I have here. My son is disabled. You know, forty years ago, when I was thirty, I was like most people. I had a job. I had a beautiful two-year-old. I lived in a great neighborhood and had nothing to do with people with special needs. My life was busy full and I figured it was always somebody else's problem. Until the day my second child was born, had no warnings, no genetic testing, could have predicted my duport special needs. People don't like to think it can happen to them. They smile and say to themselves, "Well, that's too bad." I feel sorry for her, but that's her problem. My son is nonverbal. He can't read or write. He can't take care of his basic needs like shaving, brushing his teeth without supports in place. He functions as a four-year-old. My husband and I have raised three children in Virginia. Two of them are now married and live on their own and our son is still with us. Its transitions are very, very difficult for him, limiting our access to many community events, including traveling overnight to see his siblings, nieces and nephews. For us to visit our children or grandchildren, we also have to take turns. With one parent staying with Stephen, Stephen's inability to adjust to a different environment and change in schedule causes breakdowns, which usually results in ending activities planned. Finding a caregiver to provide respite has been found by us to be nearly impossible and excessively expensive if we're able to find any respite services at all. My husband and I are retired. We're seventy. And our lives still revolve around our son, Stephen and his needs. I had a conversation the other day with someone who had just had a second child. He was sharing how much his life had changed over the years since he was in high school, how his responsibilities had increased and the adjustments he and his wife had had to make. He looked at me and said, "Well, I guess being retired and having an empty nest is kind of an adjustment too, isn't it?" And I looked at him and said, "I don't know." My son's life as well as ours is stagnant. We are seventy. I have been diagnosed with cancer. My son has been on the waitlist for twenty-two years. And we are not priority one. We will not be receiving this waiver this time around. But having said that, could you imagine what kind of criteria that thirty-four hundred clients are, have, what their lives must be like to have, continue to have, to be on the list for the priority one waivers? I want to thank you very much, Governor Youngkin, for, for bringing this up for the budget. We're asking, please, to fund thirty-four hundred waivers for the priority one. I can't even imagine what that would be, what their lives are like. And we thank you for, for your support of Virginia, the Ark of Virginia's legislative agenda. And thank you once again, Senator Hanger. I'm very sad that you're leaving because you've been a great support for our organization. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Utterback.
Yes, moving back up to number twelve, Maggie Mowen.
Hi, my name is Maggie Mowen. I live in Roanoke, Virginia with my husband. We have twins who both have cerebral palsy. They are thirty-five years old. Although their disability is the same, their needs and situations are very different. Over the years, I've been able to see a lot of all these kind of workings as to they affect both of our children. I'd like to start with the good news. Our son has a DD waiver. He's had the waiver for about five years. It's made all the difference in the world in his life. And I certainly thank you all for your support in this program. The shortcoming in the DD waiver at this point is much like what the woman from Moms in Motion spoke about just a few minutes ago. He has a waiver, which enables him to have help in his home. The service provider that he had been with closed. I don't know exactly why, but probably because they couldn't get enough people to work. And so that left him without a service provider. When I start looking to find another provider to be able to come into his home and help him, it was the only reason that we were able to continue help with, for him, was that the worker that had been with him through Moms in Motion and had been with him for two years and was very bonded with him said, "I'll go with him." So I found a new strengthening our systems group. And they said, "The only reason we can accept him is because he is coming with the worker that we can hire." There is such a shortage. Imagine people that have a waiver that can't get services. And it, and it all goes back to money, to what they're being paid. And that's, that's a huge problem. And as the woman from Moms in Motion said, it doesn't matter how many waiver spots we open up if we can't find providers to help our disabled family members. My daughter's story is very different. She's on a DD waiver waitlist because her needs are not, are, are different. I'll just put it that way. The issue that I would like to address with, for her is Medicaid Works is a program designed to allow disabled individuals to work but maintain their benefit. If you have a DD waiver, you can, and she doesn't have one. She's on the waitlist, but looking to the future. You cannot enroll, you cannot be in Medicaid Works. You will lose your services through Medicaid. My daughter is thirty-five years old. She has a, an undergrad degree in communication. She has a master's in divinity. She's currently doing a internship at Lynchburg General Hospital to be a hospital chaplain. The next step for chaplain is to do a one-year residency, which pays a stipend. If she, anyway, to make a long story short, she could get a job for something she's worked her whole life to do and she'd be really good at it. But she wouldn't be able to do that job if she didn't have Medicaid supports and personal care because she can't dress or bathe or drive or all those things because she's in a wheelchair. So we're taking somebody who's educated, capable, able to support themselves with the right support. And so looking into that Medicaid Works program and the DD waiver, I think is so important to, to allow disabled individuals to have somebody come in their home and help them get ready for work and give them a ride to work so they can work. Thank you very much. Appreciate all your support and, and all of the good work that the Ark of Virginia does for our disabled Virginians.
Thank you, Ms. Mowen.
Um, number fourteen, Marta Keen. Don't believe we have Marta with us in the room, so moving on to number fifteen, Philip Norman.
Hello, good morning. My name is Philip Norman. I'm the Western Regional Manager for Childcare Ware Virginia. We are a statewide nonprofit organization that assists both families and providers to ensure high-quality childcare programs and childcare accessibility. We help families identify, um, programs and assist childcare providers to offer high-quality programs, both childcare centers and, uh, home-based providers by offering professional development opportunities, many of them free of charge. Um, I've been working in childcare and after-school programming for roughly ten years. Um, currently in my role as Western Regional Manager, I support families and also provide a wide array of support services to providers. Um, we provide, um, professional development opportunities such as free first aid CPR courses, emergency preparedness classes, and a series of trainings on strengthening business practices. Uh, childcare is a business, yet there is, uh, a lot of room for improvement in best business practices utilized by childcare programs. So today I want to talk to you about two policy issues. First, as I said, childcare is a business. Childcare centers are struggling to recruit and retain staff. One of the challenges is that childcare wages tend to be very low. Uh, in Virginia, the going rate is thirteen dollars per hour, about twenty-eight thousand annually. However, in today's competitive job market, many area businesses have increased their hourly rates. Fast food and retail are offering jobs at several dollars more per hour with no training required. Plus, many of these jobs come with benefits such as healthcare. Even McDonald's offers telehealth be- benefits to employees. In contrast to work in childcare, beyond, uh, a background check, which is a very in-depth background check process, uh, individuals have orientation training, annual training hours that are required. Many centers can't afford to offer benefits such as healthcare. As a result, there is a childcare worker shortage, and that impacts the financial stability of childcare programs. It impacts the number of children that can be enrolled in centers, and that impacts parent choices as well as business viability. Uh, some states have enacted refundable tax credits for the childcare workforce. Uh, these credits are designed to provide a wage supplement based on credentials and higher education. It's a way to link professional development with wage increases. Uh, Louisiana has done this since two thousand and seven. Last year, Maine enacted a similar statute sending monthly wage supplements to the childcare workforce rather than using the tax code. Uh, the concept is the same because parents already struggle with the price of care. It's time to consider other compensation strategies to address the need to pay childcare workers higher wages. Uh, second, currently working parents with children under the age of five are eligible for childcare subsidy if they have income under eighty-five percent of state median income. If they also have a school-aged child, then that child is also eligible for childcare subsidy. But the same is not true for families with only school-aged children. For parents who have only school-aged children, income eligibility ranges between one hundred and fifty percent and one hundred and eighty-five percent of the poverty level. The difference in eligibility is literally thousands of dollars per year. Family allows families with children under the age of five to receive subsidy up to eighty-five percent of the state median income expires in June. When you consider extending it for these families, I ask that you also consider applying this income threshold to all families, including those who only have school-aged children. Um, family affordability and childcare staffing are two of the most pressing needs right now. So I ask that this is, uh, discussion in the upcoming session to address both issues. Uh, thank you for your time and opportunity. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mowen.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, before we announce the next name, just for everybody who's on the call, if you wish to provide public testimony to the committee, you need to accept the, um, invitation that you'll receive to be promoted to a panelist. Um, next up is number sixteen, Robin Church. Uh, don't see, uh, Robin Church available. Number seventeen is Robin Hubert. I don't believe we have Robin Hubert with us, so number eighteen, Ron Boyd.
Good morning, and thank you for the, this opportunity, Mr. Chairman, Senators, legislators of the many committees. I'm Ron Boyd with the Local Office on Aging, uh, covering the area of Roanoke, Virginia. And I speak today on behalf of my colleague AAA Directors and over one point four million older Virginians and their families. Area Agencies on Aging serve every locality in Virginia, helping older Virginians stay in their home as they age. Not only do we, the Triple A's, provide services for older Virginians in each and every community, but we speak for the community-based services that enable our shared constituents to live in the communities that they helped to build in their earlier years and where they choose to remain living today. While Virginia's total population is expected to grow by twenty-two percent in two thousand and fifty, our seniors' population will double over the same period, growing from twenty percent of the population to thirty-one percent. Virginia's most at-risk and vulnerable population, which is those eighty-five and older, will more than quadruple. The governor budget continues the critical funding in the next budget that ensures older adults and Triple A's don't face the potential of service reduction in future years. This seven hundred thousand funding addresses the reallocation of both federal and state funds that otherwise would have called, would have caused uneven disruptions in services across the Commonwealth. The Triple A's will be seeking to support a budget amendment requesting an additional five million that will support the array of unmet needs of core services of the Triple A networks. Across the network, the need varies from home care, personal care, nutrition, home-delivered meals, congregant meals. But we are requesting the five million to be available across the network, distributed equally for any of the core Triple A services, so individual Triple A's can be specific in the area served. Additionally, we support the funding necessary for an executive director of the Commonwealth Council on Aging. This is one more important piece of our efforts, along with Secretary Lattell and former Senator Mason to elevate aging. Not only staying in their homes is preferred by older Virginians, it's a saving of resources. Virginia's twenty-five area agencies on aging are your frontline in supporting our older residents who want to remain in their homes or the homes of their family members. An investment in the area agencies and aging network will elevate aging and will save costs to the Commonwealth. It is also an investment in the quality of life for older Virginians and their caregivers living across Virginia. You have our trust and confidence as you tackle these issues confronting real Virginians. We give you our support and offer our assistance as you commence the two thousand and twenty-four session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Uh, number nineteen, Mr. Chair, is Shay Roth.
Good morning. My name is Shay Roth, and I live in the city of Roanoke. I currently work for the Ark of Virginia as a credential peer mentor and a self-advocacy coach. I am also co-chair of the Life Like Yours Self-Advocacy Alliance. Uh, uh, I would like to share some information about the peer mentoring service. The service provides people with developmental and intellectual disabilities the opportunity to work with a mentor who has years of years, years of lived experience. The mentee chooses a goal and receives sixty hours over six consecutive months to work towards his or her goal. The peer mentoring service is unique because it is the only service that is provided both in-person and virtually. The peer mentor and the peer mentee can be in two different locations with the assistance of technology. The service can be provided. These goals can range from social, learning social skills and, and for independence or working on finding meaningful employment. As a peer mentor, I have seen firsthand the positive impact this service has had on not only mentees themselves, but their families as well. Briefly, I would like to ta- take the opportunity to share a story about one of the mentees that I have been fortunate to work with. Um, the mentee wanted to work on their time management skills. We began by working together to figure out strategies to strengthen and build their time management skills. With time and some trial and error and finding the right strategies that work for them, this mentee has shared that they are now feeling more confident and get, to get things done. Um, the family has shared with me that their loved one is more confident in themselves as well. I've seen firsthand the positive impact that this service has had on not only people that I've worked with, but their families as well. I fully support the Ark of Virginia's legislative agenda and the Ark's agenda item to increase the peer mentoring rate. Peer mentoring is the only direct service left out of the DD waiver rate increase. Peer mentoring is the only service provided by people with disabilities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Roth.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, number twenty, uh, Thomas Benzinger.
Good morning, distinguished representatives. I'm Tom Benzinger from Augusta County. I'm a trustee on the Board of the Virginia Museum of Natural History, where I've served since the governor appointed me in September two thousand and fifteen. Our Museum of Natural History is under Secretary of Education, Secretary Gudera, with a mission to interpret Virginia's natural heritage in ways relevant to all citizens of the Commonwealth. You could think of it as Virginia Smithsonian, and like the museum in DC, our museum houses collections of dinosaurs, fossils, bones, pottery shards, and arrow points among over ten million natural and cultural artifacts at our main campus in Martinsville. Today, I speak in support of constructing a branch campus of the museum to interpret the natural history of the Shenandoah Valley and Blue Ridge and to be located in Waynesboro. You may ask why Waynesboro? Because of its proximity to the Blue Ridge Parkway, Shenandoah National Park, and Interstate sixty-four and eighty-one, our economic analysis by Chimura in two thousand and twenty-three estimates we would attract sixty-five thousand visitors and have an annual regional impact of four point two million dollars on the economy of the area. This analysis also concludes that, once built, the campus would generate revenue to the agency as well as provide jobs in an economically depressed community. Beyond its economic impact, schools would benefit too. Children who visit a museum during kindergarten had higher achievement scores in reading, mathematics, and science in third grade than those who did not, according to a two thousand and fourteen study by the Institute of Museum and Library Services. Current educational programs at our main campus reach a diverse student population and support teachers both in classrooms and on-site. So let me get specific. Currently, our schematic design for the Waynesboro campus is complete, thanks to approximately two million dollars invested by the state. The design plans are in review by the Division of Engineering and Buildings and the Department of Planning and Budget now. Our construction cost is thirty-three million dollars, and I'm asking you to include the project in the capital outlay budget. And you may ask why now? Uh, several reasons. The impact of COVID on education is real, and we need to invest in the next generation to develop a workforce for the current and future demand by employers in STEM fields. Past state investment brought us to this point, and we are ready to take the next steps. Delays risk increasing project cost and losing momentum. The Waynesboro community has shown strong support for bringing the museum to downtown, and the city has committed one million dollars towards the project. There's also lots of synergy with other activities in the region, including the opening of the Blue Ridge Tunnel to visitors, a Riverside Greenway Trail, the South River Preserve funded by Mercury Settlement monies, and the soon-to-be-open Sunset Park overlooking the city. All of this says to me that the time is right now. I hope you agree, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Benzinger.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we will go back through the list to announce those who, um, we've missed. Um, first up, we'll start with Jessica Price. I see Ms. Price in the room with us.
Ms. Price, if you'd like to speak, you can unmute yourself now and speak. And I think we've got the next one.
Okay, all right. Um, the next, uh, person, um, is Robin Church. Ms. Church, if you'd like to unmute yourself and provide testimony, now is the opportunity.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I am going to pass at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Church. Um, and I do believe we have a cell phone number dialed in, Tyler, so I think we give that person the opportunity to speak and announce themselves.
Yes, the, the individual who is calling in today, you can unmute yourself and speak.
This is Catherine Childers, and I was, I've already spoken. I'm just listening to the rest of the meeting. Thanks.
Okay, perfect.
Kim, uh, did we, did we skip over Mrs. Keisha James? I don't.
Yes, sir, I would just wanted, I'll come back to her and announce her next. Um, we wanted to make sure we covered our phone number first. Um, yes, next is Ms. Keisha James. Don't believe we have Keisha with us. Um, next on the list is Marta Keen. Keen, I don't believe we have Ms. Keen with us. And last I have is, um, Robin Hubert. I don't believe we have Ms. Hubert with us. And, Mr. Chairman, that would include, uh, conclude this side of speaking queue.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McKay and, and Mr. Williams. Thank you kindly for helping conduct this meeting today. Um, I'm gonna say a few comments and then hand it over to my colleague, Senator Hanger. Uh, I really appreciate you all taking your time today to join in on this call and this hearing associated with the budget. Uh, a lot of very interesting subject matter and topic that, uh, the Senator and I and the, my colleagues online take very seriously. We understand the importance, um, and I will promise you that I will pay, uh, a lot of attention to these specific items when they're addressed in the budget process coming up. Uh, so, Senator, at that time, I'd like to hand it over to you for closing comments, please.
Okay, thank you, Delica Austin, and, uh, want to thank everyone who participated this morning and certainly staff for, uh, handling this so smoothly for us. Uh, a lot of comments this morning, a lot of them were, were focused in the area of health and human services, particularly, uh, disability waivers, which is something we've struggled with. Uh, and as, uh, several of the speakers pointed out, it's not just an issue for authorizing additional slots. Uh, we've got to build capacity if we're going to be able to, uh, be, make it some meaningful improvements in the area. But I think that will be the challenge, uh, during the upcoming session and over the next couple of years for us to address that adequately. Again, thank everyone. Uh, I'm pleased to be a part of this conversation this morning. Uh, and though I will not be there, we'll be paying attention and, uh, communicating my thoughts every once in a while, some of the things that I think need to be done. Delica Austin, that's all I had to say.
Mr. Chairman, I do believe if it's your prerogative, Jessica Price is raising her hand to speak. Oh, and I believe she just dropped off the call. Um, we are just gonna try to give her an opportunity if, that it was your will to.
Oh, sure, if she is there, uh, Kim, go ahead and, uh, plug her in.
Unfortunately.
Is she still there?
It looks like she dropped off. Um, we can wait a few seconds to see if she rejoins the attendee list, or we can end. It's your prerogative as described.
Certainly, and for, for Jessica and anyone else who, who may be aware, uh, and on the line now, um, we, we will, we do solicit your input, uh, which you can get to any, any individual member or to staff, uh, after we conclude this meeting. Uh, it's all a part of the process. Uh, so, uh, we'd, we'd just, uh, do you see her coming back on, Tyler?
No, it does not look.
Okay, okay, Jessica, if you're hearing this, uh, we would appreciate hearing from you. Uh, uh, give us a call, uh, one of the members, and we'll certainly, uh, welcome your input. And for everyone else.
And for everyone else, again, thank you all. Delegate Austin, thank you for carrying the load there this morning. Always good to work with you and any other members, Delegate Moorefield, I see still out there, Delegate Russell, and the others who've been a part of this. Thank you all, and good luck with this session. I'd like to close by saying, Senator Hanger, Senator Edwards, once again, I'd like to say how very appreciative we are and how, what an asset you've been to the Commonwealth of Virginia for many, many years. And we very much appreciate you devoting and delegating your time to the individuals of the Commonwealth and the sincerity that you placed in your responsibilities. It's phenomenal. And so I welcome to hear from you at any point in time throughout the legislative session, either of you. And I certainly would encourage your participation to continue. You have a great deal to further contribute. So thank you all. Thank you, staff, for conducting this meeting today. Thank you, everyone, for attending. As the senator said, please forward us an email. If you didn't get on today, call our staff. We'd be happy to listen to your concerns and promote them further at the appropriate time. So thank you kindly. That concludes our meeting.